Good evening, everyone. The, actually, I just got a new gift. Check this out. The November 11th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sefernan, councilmember Revelle, here. Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hakkatis is here. He's making his way up. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Harris will not be here. She'll be remote. And councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
And Mayor Biss.
Here, we have a quorum and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is approving the virtual participation of councilmembers Kelly and Harris who we've been in. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves to approve the virtual participation of councilmembers Kelly and Harris who are traveling for work-related reasons. Councilmember Hakkatis seconds. Senior discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Business of the city.
That's part of their job.
Councilmember Sefernan, councilmember Revelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hakkatis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Harris.
I'm sorry.
No, yeah, they don't vote on their own.
Oh, on their own, okay. Well, councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
And councilmember Burns.
With seven voting in favor and zero voting against, the motion carries. And for the rest of the meeting, councilmembers Kelly and Harris may participate remotely. The next item on the agenda is my announcements and proclamations. The first, it's a great pleasure to read a proclamation declaring next week Restorative Justice Week. This is a tradition we've engaged in several years in a row now. Whereas restorative justice reflects the reality that acts of wrongdoing do not just violate laws and rules, but more importantly, harm people, communities, and relationships. And whereas restorative justice builds relationships and empowers the community to take responsibility for the well-being of its members by using facilitated restorative conversations including peace circles, harm repair conferences, family conferences, incident response circles, and community circles. And whereas in 1975, prison chaplains in England launched a day to remember incarcerated people, Prisoners' Sunday. Twenty years later, the honoring of Prisoners' Sunday spread internationally, becoming Prisoners' Week. And whereas in 1996, Canada broadened Prisoners' Week to celebrate Restorative Justice Week, community victims and prisoners, later shortened to Restorative Justice Week. And whereas for decades, Evanston community members have piloted various restorative justice initiatives within our faith congregations, schools, nonprofit organizations, neighborhoods, and so forth. And whereas today governmental organizations, including the city of Evanston, along with nonprofit partners such as the James B. Moran Center for Youth Advocacy, are working to rebuild a restorative community. And whereas a restorative community is deeply rooted in the human capacity for transformation, in the belief that people are far more and far better than the worst thing they have ever done. And whereas a restorative community is a place where our shared responsibility to each other and our community is lived daily by our commitment to restorative practices that are embedded culturally in the way we treat each other, and embedded structurally in our neighborhoods, schools, and social systems, now therefore I do hereby proclaim November 17th through 23rd of 2024 as Restorative Justice Week. Acknowledging this international celebration of restorative practices as a means of raising awareness about the transformative power of restorative practices and honoring our local efforts to authentically build a restorative community. And to receive this proclamation, we have with us our friend and the city's cherished partner, representing the Moran Center and the extraordinary work that it does along these very lines, Patrick Keenan Devlin. And if you would just step forward, I would love to give this proclamation to you, Patrick. The next item on the, under this agenda item is Veterans' Day. I want to thank the many city officials, councilmembers, representatives of veterans groups, as well as the Legion, for putting together this morning's annual Veterans' Day commemoration in Fountain Square. It's something that we do every year, and I think this year the attendance was better than usual. I think perhaps partially reflecting the weather, but also I think reflecting a hunger that people are feeling now for community and for unity. And I just wanted to thank everyone for, you know, it's sort of a bizarre irony that this meeting happens to fall on Veterans' Day, as you know, happens roughly every seven years. But hopefully for many, it was a day of thanks and of reflection, as well as just a day of a council meeting. And I want to appreciate everyone who put time into making that reflection very meaningful. And lastly, you know, I want to give a tremendous thank you to the city clerks, the city clerk and her team for effectuating a really phenomenally successful early voting operation here in the civic center. We had a remarkable turnout. It was a kind of almost a celebratory kind of environment as people from across the community came and voted. And, you know, the efforts that you effectuated to make that possible were really terrific. And so, thank you. I can't help though but say that the, my thoughts about the election don't end with the fact that the clerk did a great job with early voting. You know, I think it's no secret that the outcome not only was not what I personally wanted, but was, and not only was not what the overwhelming majority of Evanstonians wanted, but was really fundamentally out of step with the values of this community. And there's a lot of people in this town right now who are having a variety of really difficult feelings. Feelings of grief, for sure, but feelings of fear as well. Concern about potentially being targeted by the incoming Trump administration, or concern that people they love will be targeted by the incoming Trump administration. So I want to say a few things about that. First of all, I've asked our staff to do an inventory of federal revenues that come to the city so that we can conduct a threat analysis, not only to assess what revenues might be drying up because of policy changes that the new administration is likely to pursue, but also frankly, what revenue streams might be imperiled because of policy demands that would all of a sudden be attached to them. I would not be surprised if the administration were to say, hey, we're not providing federal funding to municipalities unless they also go along with this, that, or the other thing that Evanstonians wouldn't be comfortable going along with. The previous Trump administration tried that in this community, and many others were successful in court, and we'll pursue those avenues. But I think we need to be cognizant of that potential threat as we do everything that we do in these coming weeks. I also, I know that everyone up here and many in the community have gotten a chance to meet Liza Robertson Young, a recent addition to our staff. I don't think she was hired for this reason, because I don't think the city manager is a fortune teller, but I'm afraid that she is the perfect person to have on our team at this moment. She worked in the Attorney General, Attorney General Kwame Rual's office for the latter two years of the previous Trump administration, coordinating efforts of states who didn't believe what the Trump, didn't agree with the Trump administration's vision on a variety of issues, to push back. And we're not going to be in the exact same situation. You know, the state of Illinois can partner with New York and California and file federal lawsuits, and we're probably not going to be partnering with Will Matt and Morton Grove to file too many federal lawsuits. But nonetheless, that experience, I think, is going to be invaluable in helping us think about what we can do to protect our people. And that's just where I want to, I want to end by saying, it is very hard, in my opinion, to predict exactly what's coming. As far as I'm concerned, it's silly to pretend that we can predict exactly what's coming. And so I think we're going to have to be nimble, we're going to have to be agile, and we're going to have to be bold. And, you know, the one thing I'll say, I can say is that Evanstonians have a long history of being bold. Evanstonians have a history of standing up for what they believe in, and Evanstonians aren't interested in being bullied. And I think that, those set of qualities are going to come in handy, because as people in our community are coming under threat, they are going to be counting on all of us to stand up and put ourselves on the line to protect them. The last thing I'll say is that the thing that we know we can do irrespective of the stuff we don't know, is we can continue to move forward, running this city, delivering services and effectuating policies in a way that is consistent with our values. And that, I think, is the most important form of resistance. I've been thinking a lot about Envision Evanston in the course of these last few days, because I don't think it's a coincidence that Donald Trump has for years been attacking the exact ideas in Envision Evanston, criticizing Democrats for abolishing the suburbs when they support ideas like that. Because what we're trying to do here is build a community that's more tightly connected. We're trying to build social fabric that makes it easier and more customary for us to all be together, for us to all stand up for one another, for us to all support each other. And one of the ways to do that is through the built environment and through the investments we make in building a city that facilitates that togetherness. That togetherness and that unity, I think, is the most important antidote to what's coming down the pike. And I, for one, plan to do everything I can to make sure the city of Evanston is leading the path in building that type of community. Sorry for the long comments, but I've got a lot on my mind these days. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, Clerk Mendoza, members of the city council. I've asked Daryl King, our Water Production Bureau Chief, to come tonight to present an update on our lead service line replacement program. And Mr. King has a presentation, so welcome, Mr. King.
Mayor Biss, members of the city council, city manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza, Daryl King, Water Production Bureau Chief. I'm here to present the draft, City of Evanston's Lead Service Line Replacement Plan. This draft will change over the next three years. And so as I get started, I want you to keep in mind that this is the first draft, and it represents a 20-year replacement. Although, once a new law gets published in the Federal Register, that will change. Once that happens, we'll update this plan, and this plan is required to be updated annually through 2027. So this is version one, draft one of the plan. This is just an image of, is it ready?
Yes.
This is an image of lead service line ownership. And, you know, the city-owned is the blue portion, the homeowner-owned is the orange portion. And through this process, either the city-owned, the homeowner-owned, or the entire service line will be replaced as part of this program. And there's a lot of information on the evanstonleadreplacement.org webpage. It details everything that we have going on. And so, right now, the status, we have 4,239 no-led services. We have 10,415 have-led, and total service is 14,654. And since January 1, 2022, when the Illinois law was enacted, we've replaced 610 lead service lines. And as we develop and ramp up, and depending on how the requirements fall, we'll more than likely be replacing 600 or more each year. But we've done that many over the last couple of years. And so this is a map where you can, you can visit it, put your address in, and it'll tell you what material type you have at your location, whether it's no-led, whether it's copper, whether it's galvanized, whatever that material is, that map will, will tell you that. If there's a conflict or something not lining up, just call 311, and then we can come out and verify whatever that material is, if it's not matching what we have in our records. So this is the Illinois law. I mentioned this, enacted in 2022. Any disturbed lead service line needs to be replaced. So that was something new. When we replaced water mains, we used to only go up to the shut-off valve in the parkway. Now, the full service line is required to be replaced, and the city has, with the resolution, has declared lead as a public, getting rid of it as a public health benefit, and the city has decided to replace the entire service from the water main into the house. Every community does not do that. Requires a replacement of all service lines starting in 2027. Requires Evanston to replace all services by 2047. Again, that'll change. Evanston anticipates 500 a year, beginning in 2027 with the current legis, the current law. And so, a 20-year plan was submitted to the IEPA in April. That's the first draft of four drafts. It includes replacement categories, annual water main projects, prioritize, homeowner-initiated, leaks and breaks. We're going to talk about planned costs and construction methods, trenchless versus open cut. And these are the initial categories that we have right now. Water main projects, leaks and breaks, customer initiated. Leaks and breaks is if there's a leak on the service line, either on the public or private. The city will replace the entire service line if it's led on both sides at no charge. Customer initiated is if the homeowner wants to replace their side, then the city will replace the city side at no charge. Prioritize blocks. We'll get more into that, but block by block, there's a prioritization strategy that we've developed. And so that's how we ended up getting to 500 each year with the current 20-year program. And so these are the planned costs. It's broken down by construction restoration for a full replacement, unit cost of 15,8, annual cost 5.5. Construction and restoration for private side replacements, another 150. 10,000 unit costs, 1.5. Subtotal for all 500 is 7 million. Contingency is 20%, and so a total of 8.4. Then there's engineering and inspection, professional services, program management, and there's a range for that depending on staff's involvement as we, as we build up staff to tackle this replacement plan. And so we're looking at a potential 10.4, 11.6 annual cost for 500 services. So I mentioned a new law, that's the LCRI Lead and Copper Rule Improvements. That rule was finalized last month, and it's scheduled to be published in the Federal Register. That has not happened yet, so it hasn't been enacted. Once it's, once it's published, it'll, it will be enacted three years later, so we're anticipating 2027. Water samples, systems must offer sample for lead, tap water for property served by lead service line replacement, galvanized requiring replacement or unknown service line. So this year, we sent out a bunch of mailers saying, hey, we believe you have a lead or a galvanized service line at that location. We sent out over 10,000 notices in 2027. We would be required to also offer sampling, tap sampling for that as well. Most systems, as part of the LCRI, will be required to replace all services in 10 years. Some systems may be eligible for deferred schedules, replacements that exceed 39 replacements per 1,000 services, and IEPA will notify those qualified water utilities in 2027. Staff has gone through that calculation for Evanston, and we would qualify for that, but utilities have to be notified by IEPA before any of that, for approval for that. And so when we look at a replacement plan on a 20-year, 16-year, and 10-year, 500, 625, and 1,000, that's the annual potential cost for that program, 11.6 up to 23.3. And so in terms of the replacement plan, the recommended method, trenchless horizontal directional drilling, minimum surface restoration, least disruptive to the homeowner inside and out, and it improves sanitary separation. So here in Evanston, a lot of our water and sewer service lines are in the same trench. And so with the horizontal directional drilling, we're able to improve that separation by moving it 10 feet away. And so that's another reason why we use, why that's the recommended method. You also have pipe pulling methods where you can pull a new copper service line through the old service line, the old lead service line. And in certain categories, that may be appropriate, but it doesn't improve sanitary separation in those instances where you got two of them in the, in the same trench. And then open cut is just that. It's open cut, it's very disruptive, a lot of restoration, and so HDD is the preferred method. So when we look at prioritization, we're doing it block by block. And so as part of the city's plan, right now, we look at children under six, there's environmental justice component income, minority populations, water usage. Water usage is important because you have certain locations that use very little water, which means that water sits in the pipes for a longer period of time, which means that's a risk that metals can leach into the, into the water. So that's prioritized. And then lead service line density, how many are on a single block. Now, when we seek funding from outside agencies like IEPA or the federal government or other agencies, their criteria may be different. So they may be offering grant money, or zero interest, or principal forgiveness. And so in those instances, we would move away from the city's priority and go under that priority so that we could qualify for that funding. And so this map here, just at a glance, the darker the block, the higher the priority. And so those priorities were based on those categories that I just talked about. And so this is an interesting table. So we have 19 census tracts in Evanston. Our top four, the state scored them. So we have the Evanston Census Track to the right, and then to the left, and then as we move to the right, the score. That score was developed by the state, not staff. And then it was ranked against the state, and then it's designated disadvantaged community. So we have a total of seven census tracts in Evanston that are designated as disadvantaged. And those are the locations in Evanston that would, in most instances, qualify for grant money, principal forgiveness, you know, different programs like that. And so this graph shows, for instance, those, those top four ranked census tracts in Evanston, how they compare to the rest of the state. And so those top four, we actually, and I'll get into that shortly, submitted for funding through IEPA with those top four census tracts. And I'll go into that funding and that opportunity here shortly. But that's how, that's how all of our census tracts compare to the rest throughout the state. And so we've applied for a $25 million loan over five years. Year one, anticipated to receive $3 million of principal forgiveness. Now, I want to be more clear on how the funding works. So we, our project plan was a five-year plan. We submitted that to IEPA. IEPA approved it. And so for year one, the way funds are released or awarded and principal forgiveness is awarded, you have to present them a shovel-ready contract with the contractor onboard. Then they say, okay, you're approved for, you know, $5 million or whatever it is, and, you know, we'll give you this much principal forgiveness. And so they don't do, they don't award it, they don't award the cash upfront because someone may not be shovel-ready. And so that, so that's how that works. I just wanted to be very clear about that. And then the funding through the state revolving fund, it's only for lead service line replacements. It's not for street resurfacing or water main replacements. And so that funding will come, you know, through, through separate mechanisms outside of this. So I wanted to be clear about that, too. Zero interest loan, 30-year repayment. Typically, it's a 20-year at a low interest. In these census tracts that I mentioned, those are the programs and potential, potential principal forgiveness on a yearly basis. And so we're earmarked for 3 million right now. And so our current projects are water main projects, pilot project, we got a $1 million grant through DECO for that. Prioritize, SRF funded, I'll talk more about that, and I already told you about homeowner-initiated leaks and breaks. Lead and copper rule revision replacements, we've replaced service lines. We have approved IEPA lead and copper sample sites at homes throughout Evanston. And if that home tests at 10 parts per billion or higher, we just replace the service. And so that's another, we've done about 10 or 11 of those. Lead care, Cook County, we partner with Cook County where they use ARPA funds to replace lead and galvanized services at daycares. And so we've identified 14 approved DCFS licensed daycare centers here in Evanston. One of the service lines have already been replaced, and so we've got three more that we hope to get done before the end of the year. And so that's been a good partnership with, with Cook County. And so funding, water fund, cash, water rates, bonds, IEPA, SRF. WIFIA is a federal program, low-interest loan program, grants, ARPA, TIF. You know, there's going to be a number of, of programs that we use to fund this. And so that five-year SRF program, those are the four census tracts. These are the areas over a five-year period where this work will occur. The red is water main replacements, and then the orange is city portions, the green is private. And so that's just the look for those four census tracts. Those four census tracts, when it's all said and done, lead service line replacements, we're looking to replace 2,394. And then water main replacements, we're looking to do 6.83 miles. This is 8092 census track. We actually are getting ready to kick off this project. We're starting outreach this Friday. We had a really good meeting earlier today with staff and councilmember Burns, just to kind of talk about outreach and phasing of the project and different things of that nature. And so when we're done in 8092, that, that work will occur over the next two to three years. We'll get 887 services replaced, 5.4 miles, and that main replaced will be 80 to 100 years old, and 100-plus-year-old water main will be replaced. And so the prioritize, I mentioned, we're earmarked for 3 million principal forgiveness. This first year in 2025, we're going to replace 290 lead service lines, 50 associated lines, 50 associated water main replacements, 240. Our standalone outreach begins this Friday, and construction will start in the spring, March, April. This is actually the location in that census tract where that work is going to start in 2025. Water main replacements in the red and in the orange, yellow, that standalone lead service line replacements, most of which are on the private side. We we kicked off a, the the pilot project with the million-dollar Deco grant last month, 100 participants, construction cost 1.3 million. And we started that again last month. We've replaced 20 services thus far of the 100. And these are the locations of that pilot project. So you see they're spread out. Those were low to moderate income areas in Evanston. And so that work is ongoing right now. And and so finally, again, these are the different categories, city projects like water main projects, things of that nature. Since 2022, 269 homeowner initiated, we've done 218, leaks and breaks, 113, L C R R, 10 for for the total of 610. And anybody have any questions? I welcome those.
If not, thank you for, what I have to say is an extraordinary extraordinarily comprehensive and helpful presentation. You know, it doesn't change the fact that it's daunting, but it's very clear and helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Yeah, we received a few public comments. Will Hahn in favor of the ARPA allocation for participatory budgeting, Wanda Johnson opposing the legacy development, another one from Chicago Apartments, Chicagoland Apartment Association opposing the dog breed and weight restrictions, the ordinance, and another one from the Downtown Association in support, from the Board of Directors in support of the Legacy Building. And I also wanted to add, as far as for the elections and other, thank you for all the election judges that we had here in Evanston. We have like extraordinary team of election judges that work here. Every single time there's an election, and there's not only presidential elections, there's municipal elections and gubernatorial, and they're always here. And they're just a great team. And it's always a pleasure to work with them. On the last day, well, last week during special city council, also thank you to Allison for covering for me. And while we tried to drag traffic downstairs, we had 1,665 people that were like throughout the day trying to line up to vote on the last day. So you have to remember to early vote, early, not on the last day of early voting. It's actually the best week to early vote is that weekend, that first weekend of early voting is the best day. It's when people come the least. But again, thank you to everyone, to all of our team, also like to the facilities team, like Johnny that works in facilities, like, I mean, he's the real election hero. So if you guys ever see him, praise him for all of his hard work and just all the people in facilities that make the elections happen. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And thanks to all who helped. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I think we have like exactly 15 people signed up. So y'all got three minutes. We'll begin as always by those who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with Eric Passit, who will be followed by Terry Went, and then Dan Joseph.
I'm Eric Passit, and I'm a citizen of the 4th Ward and the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos. I'm here for two reasons. One is to speak up against H S One, which was I was here last time about. I think the unintended consequences are going to be that, I'm going to say it for the buildings we represent, we're just going to kind of go no dogs. And because start saying, I mean, yes, I'm a dog lover myself, but if we start saying we can't, we can't restrict on size or breed, the unintended consequences is why bother? And, you know, we have enough problems to take care of already. You're just adding another one that's saying, we got to sit there and saying, okay, well, this owner's more responsible than others. That's why they're allowed to have a pit bull or a rottweiler, but this one isn't. It's already a pain to go through the screening process already to allow a dog. Now you're just adding another layer of something, you know, that people are just going to say, why do it? And so enough said about that. The other thing is about the budget. So we've, as anybody here knows, we've increased our budget a lot over the last three or four years, which I question myself. Yet I don't think the one thing that's been addressed is, is that I feel like this that hasn't been addressed. I know this is probably the wrong place to say this, but it's got to be said somewhere, is that our school attendance, you know, amount of children that are attending, you know, public schools are going way down. And I think it's just, I can tell you from some of my friends who have kids, not the right education, you know. And so here we are, raising our property taxes to a huge spot. And a lot of my friends have kids in pub, private schools that go to Evanston. And it's, you know, I know this is the wrong place. It probably should be said in District 65, but somewhere this has got to be said, you know, that we're, you know, not educating our kids because they're pulling people out. And all these articles in Evanston Review saying, why are kids pulling people out? It's very obvious. So enough said, and and thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Terry Went, who will be followed by Dan Joseph, and then Christine Loftquist. Did Terry Went head home? Okay. In that case, the next speaker is Dan Joseph, who will be followed by Christine Loftquist, and then Naki McMullin.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak. Thank you for counsel. My name is Dan Joseph. I'm a resident of the 2nd Ward at 1510 Greenwood, been there since 76, my mortgage is paid up, and I'm happy about that. My concern is about the mending of the cold, restricting the use of horses and horse-drawn vehicle carriages. The law would make unlawful to ride a horse at any and all times in Evanston and a horse-drawn carriage in the city without a permit. These are very complicated and overlooking many problems. Though a process is planned for a permit to, for a horse-drawn carriage, no process for riding a horse or having a carriage drawn by another animal such as donkey, mule, ostrich, elephant, et cetera. And also, there's no restriction for walking a horse. I could walk a horse with a mannequin of Lady Godiva, and it won't be permitted, would be permitted in City of Evanston with this cold. In in these ordinances, a horse is prohibited on any driveway, roadway, path, or trail. Not that prohibited, and, but it's not prohibited from riding a horse in an alley. Also not stated is riding a horse on private property. And I question also, if you can't bring a horse into the streets of Evanston, should the city be required to post signs at every street entering Evanston, horses prohibited? Is this a solution that doesn't have a problem? Why was this being brought up? I understand that one person didn't like her horse with carriage was treated, but no others. Should we have an ordinance about human walking a rickshaw? And this ordinance is so unusual, the only thing I can think of worse is the City of Chicago prohibiting pigeons from flying over the 10th Ward. I hope this ordinance is not passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christine Loftquist, who will be followed by Naki McMullin, and then Renee Sutherland.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, city council members. My name is Christine Loftquist, and I am here this evening representing the League of Women Voters of Evanston. We support the two developments currently under final review, the legacy proposed for 1621 Chicago Avenue and the project proposed for 938 Custer Avenue. These developments will add 340 apartments to Evanston's housing stock. The League has been a strong supporter of affordable housing for years, excuse me, housing development for years. The projects being reviewed are consistent with the League's recently updated housing and land use positions. In addition, they are well-located and will provide much-needed housing, including affordable units. We are especially pleased to see the addition of transit-oriented development. It is notable that the Land Use Commission has unanimously unanimously recommended that council approve both of these projects. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Naki McMullin, who will be followed by Renee Sutherland, and then Celia Cardino.
Good evening, Mayor Bis and members of the council. My name is Naki McMullin. I live in the 8th Ward, and I am here to speak in favor of the two apartments under proposal. These two apartment buildings being proposed are exactly the kind of sustainable smart growth our city needs to grow our city without adding additional traffic. They are extremely well-located. They are very close to not only rapid transit, but metro commuter rail and multiple bus lines. The neighborhoods are extremely walkable, and the numerous retail and restaurants will surely appreciate hundreds of new customers in walking distance. Our city will enjoy the benefits of new neighbors and a larger tax base without displacing any additional residents, since they replaced a closed manufacturing facility and a one-story commercial building. But beyond the undeniable economic boost these projects will have, I believe that Evanston has a moral imperative to add enough housing so whoever wants to move here can, especially considering the outcome of the recent election. Evanston is an amazing city with great walkability and public transit, access to green space and cultural amenities, and a dedicated commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. These assets are why I recently chose to move here with my family. I grew up in Florida, but my wife and I decided to leave the state in 2022 because we didn't want to raise our daughter in a place where women can, didn't have the freedom to make decisions about their own body, and books were being banned from schools. We originally moved to New York, but rising rent prices forced us to move due to a failure to build enough housing in that state. We wrote, relocated to the great city of Evanston. And while we have only been here since August, we have come to truly love and cherish our new community. We hope we can grow old and watch our daughter grow old here as well. We would love to see her attend Northwestern. And we really want to stay here and put down roots. It's an amazing city. But for that to happen, the city really needs to build enough housing to prevent displacement, as well as allow whoever wants to move here to find a better place for their family and themselves. These apartments will provide a much-needed boost to the housing supply and have a combination of both market rate and affordable units. I hope city council will approve these proposed apartments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Renee Sutherland, who will be followed by Celia Cardino, and then Mia Shia.
Two weeks ago, while city council member Reed was shaming me and others who watch meetings from home while feeding our kids, the parents who had to organize a march to protect their kids being driven out of Bessie Roads, a million reasons why people don't make time to come give you a public comment that you'll ignore anyway, but you inspired me to come here tonight with a budget comment. You can cut the budget for the cops. All these cops getting paid to lurk around this meeting right now with guns, hassle teenagers at Target, searching them over and over and telling them to never come back, illegally surveilling community members with drones, license plate readers, who knows what else? Coming here to trick you guys with their hurry, act now and sign up to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for five more years so that a private business can use their flock cameras to surveil us all. And if you want to think about it for even a day longer, it'll cost you more. So act now. And you guys ate it up. Even Mr., I used to care about warrantless surveillance. You were all for it. And so cops get paid to do stuff like kick people out of their homes in the Wesley buildings, paid to stand around watching the board up company, have them use crime scene tape where only, the only crime was the way the city and housing providers let those tenants down. Your care team is handling a bunch of calls that you used to send cops out for, but there's no corresponding budget cut for the cops. And you pay our money, hundreds of thousands of dollars of our money to this company flock that markets itself to cops. So you'll pay to let them watch all of us coming and going, actually moving across the country. And you guys say, don't worry about how the cops around the country are using that warrantless surveillance that you make us pay for. Even while in the state of Kansas, just for one example, there've been multiple cops who use the flock camera service or system to stalk their domestic partners, estranged wives, even a police chief there used it to track where his ex-girlfriend and her new partner go. But you guys are content to trust those same stalker cops because someone checked a checkbox saying that Evanston won't, doesn't want those cops and government entities to use our flock cameras to track people from out of state traveling through Illinois to seek abortion care or let ICE use it to hunt for undocumented residents. You could cancel that contract, and that would be hundreds of thousands of our tax dollars that you wouldn't have to pay. And plus, you'd get the added benefit of actually protecting our rights. So maybe you'll care now that Trump is about to come into office and all that tracking data is sitting in a federal, in federal databases somewhere to help them enact their even more fascist agenda. And I did submit a public comment to be shared in the Housing and Community Development Committee last week. You guys have a little checkbox on your Google form that says if you'd like to have it read into the meeting. And Councilmember Revel wouldn't allow that, right? And that's because the whole point of that meeting was to let Sarah Flax get away with her version of how three affordable housing buildings on Wesley just happened to deteriorate and left off the part where Richard
Thank you very much.
From H O D C.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Celia Cardino, followed by Mia Shia, and then Meron Ubrax.
Hello, everyone. My name is Celia Cardino. I was participatory budgeting for the city of Evanston, very proud to be part of this project in our community. I'm very honored today to introduce you to you guys, the budget delegates. Today, later, you guys are going to be presented by Christine Mayor, the mental health first aid training to be approvable today. So basically, P B is this, representation, want, commitment, civic, too. And people came together to participate, to share their ideas. Those budget delegates really were too committed to us, to the whole process of P B. And I wanted you guys to hear their voices. And I'm very honored to know each of you through the whole process of P B, too.
Hi there. So my name is Meron Ubrax. I live in the 6th Ward, and I'm a senior at E T H S. And I really loved the experience that I have with participatory budgeting because I feel like as a high school student, there's not a ton of opportunities to get so directly involved with local government. And I was able through P B to meet with a lot of other community members of all races, all genders, all backgrounds, all ages, people that maybe I wouldn't have ordinarily been able to talk to. And we were able to come up with lots of ideas about things that are genuinely impacting our community. I wasn't one of the people that came up with the mental health first aid training plan that you guys are going to talk about tonight. But I think it's incredibly important, and I'm really excited that that's on the agenda. So I think participatory budgeting is a great way to get people involved, to get community members involved, and to get young people involved with government. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. This is Shelley Lopez. I represent the 6th Ward, and I am a P B delegate. We are ecstatic for the mental health proposal, being that we had to deal with COVID and depression. And, you know, there was an idea for this because And, you know, there was an idea for this because there's so many people who suffer with this. But the problem is, what training do we, even a regular person like me, have to help deescalate or even to address the situation? So this proposal will do exactly that, is train those who really need it to be able to help in building the community together because it takes a village. And we all need to get together, and we all need to be able to help one another, especially in this situation. So we are really ecstatic to support the mental health training for PB. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Mia. I'm from the 1st Ward. I am a senior at Northwestern, and I've been a part of this process since my freshman year of college. So it has been a very long time coming. I'm very excited that this proposal is being voted on today because I actually helped to write it with another community member. And, you know, whenever I was coming to college, my one goal was to get integrated into community and to find, you know, the people that really care about this place. And I think PB Evanston was the best way to do that. And I think that this has been the most important part of my college process and my, you know, college career in general. And I think, you know, this proposal really came from, you know, the best of my heart because I work in a lot of these elementary schools through Books and Breakfast as a tutor in the mornings, and I can really see, you know, the tangible benefits that the mental health training can have. You know, at Northwestern as well, these kinds of trainings have been implemented and are still really needed. So I think that there will be a lot of benefits to the greater community, and I'm very honored that, you know, I can come here and speak about it today. It feels like a very full-circle moment for me.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is DeKalb Fonda, who will be followed by Javoid Simmons, and then Ray Friedman.
Hello, everyone. DeKalb Fonda, 2nd Ward, and member of the West Village Arts and Business District. And I'm here to speak in support of the Evanston Maids' request for funds. Before I do that, Mayor Bis, I just want to thank you for your comments about what we all need to do to support our most vulnerable citizens as we go forward. So thank you for that. So in 1980, my partner and I chose a neighborhood that was just south and east of Dodge and Dempster because of its integrated diversity. That's where we've raised our family. And yet, the 1,800 block of Dempster, where the building is that Evanston Maids wants to buy and renovate, was a dead zone at that time. An area of town where, and many of you probably know this, many people didn't want to come. They were afraid to come to our neighborhood. We had payday loans. We had check cashing stations on both ends of the block. We had fast food restaurants, a uniform store that was rumored to be run by the Russian mafia, a grocery store that left, many empty storefronts and houses on both sides. Then in 2010, Nancy Floyd bought the Hartwood Center for Mind, Body, and Spirit at 1816 Dempster. And she bought the uniform shop from the Russians. And she began a revitalization of that block with the help of Lionel Jean Baptiste, who was on council at that time, and Paul Zalmuzak. And then in 2015, the West Village Business Association started. And we now have Hartwood bringing in thousands of people to that block that have never been to that area before. We have Hartwood bought two houses across the street from Hartwood, which are now affordable homes for people to live in. And we have Kurtz Cafe. We had Kurtz Cafe, which is now Zently, a wonderful restaurant with Turkish grocery on one end, a Haitian gift shop on the other, and H&amp;H Printing, hopefully soon to be Evanston Maids. Last month, we had a great jamboree with thousands of people who came to enjoy that block and learn about this neighborhood. Evanston Maids is a successful arts organization in our city, and they will solidify and revitalize this revitalization that began in, you know, in 2010 by bringing more people, more energy, vibrancy, excitement to this business district and further shifting some of those old stereotypes of that area. So if you know Lisa Dee and Nancy Floyd, you know that they are both women who are forces of nature. I've worked with both of them on many projects, and everything they touch turns to gold. So I'm suggesting that you use some of the TIF money that you could turn into gold. And I hope you do. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Javoid Simmons, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Hunter Lee.
And thank you. And I should just say, she said mine already. I'm really here to just kind of highlight I'm an artist, retired and became an artist. I haven't always been that. But Evanston Maids, I think, is a very important thing. About three years ago, we had a building that we put up not far from us. It was called the Crown Center. I didn't support that. I was wrong. Turned out it was a great place, and it was wonderful, and I go to it now. You know, and what it did, it brought people from all over the city to this location, from the north, you know, and center, all around. And people are meeting and coming together at that facility. And so I think we have something here with Evanston Maids that will do the same thing. Artists, there's a great collective of people that have come together, and I'd like to see this whole movement of people coming and becoming familiar with this area and understanding that it is really a great and viable place to be. As my partner said, we've been there for about 44 years now. And I would appreciate it as an artist and as a person who wants to see this continued influx of differences in this community to come. I encourage you to support them in this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Hunter Lee, and then Sue Lulbach.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start with commenting the lady who commented on Devon Reed's comment that he was embarrassed that nobody was here to talk about the budget. And I was surprised on that also. Also, I was surprised that last week, he had three ward meetings, five different aldermen, same night, almost the same time. So, you know, I like to go to all the ward meetings if I possibly can. If they're held on the same night, and you took up five aldermen to have three meetings, you know, I can't attend all those meetings. So that's kind of embarrassing for me to see. And I've been talking about this for a while. So trying to put things in proper perspective, and this is not just about you, it's about 78,000 residents of the city of Evanston. When you make huge decisions without the input and discussion with your residents, you've done a huge disservice to your residents that elected you. The government has created safeguards to protect the residents and ensure that our voices are heard. You have followed through on the first part of that safeguard, which is required by law, known as public comment. It does state in every agenda, however, that public comment is intended to foster a dialogue, not right now, but at a day and a time in the near future set up by all of you. I've heard, since I moved here eight or nine years ago, there'll be plenty of time to talk about it. Don't worry about it. We're not making a decision tonight. Plenty, there's not plenty of time to talk about it because decisions are made, and we don't have any time to talk about it. So when you bring items before City Council, before they've been discussed with residents, you again have done an injustice to all of your residents. When you were elected Mayor Bis, you spoke about transparency and accountability. What happened there? Some aldermen have asked me, "Why do I keep bringing up the same issues over and over again?" Because these same issues keep reoccurring without input from residents and the taxpayers who are forced to bear the cost of all these issues, projects that are coming up. I'm very sorry, but I and many others are feeling used and abused here. Are we working for you, or are you working for us? After being found in violation of the Open Meetings Act, you still have not had a meeting with the residents on 909 Davis. And I understand you signed a 15-year lease, $2.5 million per year. And please, don't use any of my tax dollars to pay for office space in a building that we do not own, and you refuse to discuss with residents.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Hunter Lee, who will be followed by Sue Lulbach.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Hunter Lee, and I'm an undergraduate at Northwestern University. Before I begin, I would like to say thank you to all of our veterans for their service and bravery in protecting our loved ones and this country. So I will start by sharing a presentation. I just sent a request to share, actually. So I'm a resident of Ward 4 in Evanston. I live off of Sherman Ave. And while living here, I have noticed that many residents and students, as well as myself, have been using a crossing that has no crosswalk. And so for the safety of our community, I am here speaking today to place a controlled crosswalk at the intersection of Sherman Ave and Simpson, and Simpson Street. So this is a street view of the crossing, and as you can see, there is no crosswalk. But there is, however, tactile paving, which indicates the presence of a, of a crosswalk. And so this is very dangerous and misleading for individuals who are blind or can't see very well because they do expect a crosswalk to be there when there is not one. Additionally, just generally, people who are crossing in this area have to watch out for cars coming from multiple directions. And these cars are often coming at speeds well over, speeds well over the speed limit of 25 miles per hour. And so I sent out a petition around a month or two ago. This is the statement that those who signed the petition agreed to. And if you're interested in knowing what the petition looks like, you can go ahead and scan the QR code. There were 107 responses, and of those 107 responses, 1/5 of them are Evanston residents. Additionally, 1/5 are friends and family of Evanston residents, and 73% are Northwestern students, who make up a good chunk of the community of 4th Ward, of the 4th Ward community. When asked about why they're signing this petition, 32% said that they're frustrated that this crossing puts them in danger every time they commute. Additionally, 66% say that Evanston, they want to see Evanston neighborhoods become safer for children, family members, and friends. And additionally, 72% would like to see the town prioritize pedestrian safety. 41% of those who filled out this survey said that they have observed drivers speeding down Sherman Ave. Additionally, 8% have almost gotten in a car crash at this intersection. And I myself am part of this 8%. At this time, I was not on my, I was not a pedestrian. I was actually in a car taking a left turn onto Sherman Ave from Simpson Street. And out of nowhere, from behind us, someone was speeding and almost hit us as we were turning. And so putting a crosswalk here would help enforce the speed limit and also make it safer for both cars and pedestrians. And I will be living here for around two more years, so I would feel a lot safer if there was a crosswalk at this intersection that I'm using every single day. And I'm sure a lot of residents and students within this community would feel the same. Additionally, this is very time-sensitive because the winter season is coming up, and this intersection becomes a lot more dangerous in snowy and wet conditions. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sue Lulbach.
Hi, I'm Sue Lulbach with Connections for the Homeless, and I just wanted to reiterate my support for the two developments being introduced tonight. Not only do they support our priority for land use of housing abundance and housing affordability, but they also are looking at parking in some new and different ways that I think fit right in with the Envision Evanston model. And so I think that they're really good sort of model developments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the list of people who signed up in person to speak in person. We now move, as always, to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Julia Forgash, who will be followed by Denise Peretto, and then John Kennedy.
Thank you. My name is Julia Forgash. I live in downtown Evanston in the 4th Ward. I am here to speak in opposition to the proposed high-rise development at 1621 Chicago Avenue. The location of this proposed building, Chicago Avenue between Church and Davis, is the most congested block in downtown Evanston. I know this because I live there. I would challenge each council member to drive on that block at various times of the day and see what it's like. Adding over 100 people to this block will mean a constant flow of moving trucks, Amazon trucks, Ubers, food delivery, and other service vehicles. This is a two-lane road. There is nowhere for these vehicles to go. They will have no choice but to block traffic. The developers' proposed solution to this added congestion is to eliminate three parking spaces in order to have a loading zone dedicated to this high-rise. We all know that it's best for Evanston if we patronize local businesses. But with this project, you are reducing our parking options. And as someone who lives in downtown Evanston in a building with a loading zone out front, I can tell you that our loading zone is consistently full with cars whose drivers believe that it is just free parking. I agree that Evanston needs more housing, especially affordable housing. But this particular block of Chicago Avenue cannot absorb everything that comes with a new high-rise. If you approve this project, you will be compromising the quality of life of your existing residents. It seems to me as well that this, that this proposed development runs counter to the Envision Evanston plan. In Envision Evanston, it says, quote, "There should be a lot of tall buildings in the central downtown area, while the edges should transition to shorter buildings as they approach residential neighborhoods," unquote. The east side of this block of Chicago Avenue backs up to a residential neighborhood. This proposed development runs contrary to Envision Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Denise Peretto, who will be followed by John Kennedy.
Good evening, Denise Peretto. I am in the 1st Ward. Mayor Bis, Clark Mendoza, Manager Stowe, and all of the City Council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. If you haven't met me, my name is Denise Peretto, and I get up every day to make this country, and now this community, live up to its promise of liberty and justice for all. I do that in a lot of ways. My biggest values are authenticity, freedom, and fun. And the project that I'm here to talk about tonight, related to Evanston Maids, is all about that. And artists lead the way for authenticity, freedom, and fun. I want to tell you my Evanston origin story. In the fall of 2015, I arrived here. I met Lisa Dee. Our sons were in Mr. Engelmann's class at Dewey. And I want you to know that the invitation for Evanston totally oversells you. The party does not live up to it. And I say that every chance I get. But I don't just say that. I roll up my sleeves and I got involved. Mayor Tisdale tapped me for the Parks and Rec Board in the spring of 2016. I served there until 2021, and I was the outgoing president at that, or chair at that time. A couple of the things that I oversaw were the policy that we have now for naming and renaming our parks. And I was part of the Crown, I'm part of Friends of Crown as well, Friends of Robert Crown. I tell you all of that to say that I'm not someone who comes very often before you. I'm not someone who sits and criticizes you behind your back. I come to your face. Secondly, I also am someone who cares deeply about this community. And let me tell you something. No one works harder than Lisa Dalen Tony and Liz Kramer, who are at the core and heart of Evanston Maids. And I want you to know that this project actually started on power walks at McGaw. And really, really got solidified in the fall, in the winter of 2021, when we had a pop-up downtown Evanston and donated space. And for 45 days with volunteers, we injected money into this community, raising at least $85,000 for artists. No one works harder than those two women and all of our board. Artists have always led the way in revolutions. And we have a 15- And we have a 1,500-day, at a minimum, winter coming right now. It is really imperative that you vote for this and make sure that Evanston is a place where artists know they are valued, welcomed, and supported. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Kennedy.
Good evening, John Kennedy. I'd like to follow a comment, thoughtful comment, by our mayor with regard to the election in that I too listened to some people being interviewed post, why they voted the way they did. And there was a consistent theme that it was because of their pocketbooks, because it was hard to live day-to-day, paycheck to paycheck. Mayor Biss also spoke about what we can do locally, and I too agree. This council, although only 17% of the overall tax bill we have, can work harder to keep the tax bill down and certainly even reduce it. Let me give you some examples. We didn't have to move from this building and pay $3 million a year for the next 15 years. The Dog Beach, that people brought alternatives to almost a million-dollar deal, this council and staff ignored until finally, a few people woke up, and it looks like we might have a reasonable solution to that. And frankly, looking even at tonight's agenda, item A5, we're buying new license plate readers. Why not use, for $63,000, why not use the two that we already have? It's not a lot of money, but it's $63,000. It adds up. Let me go to the budget just for a second. Key thing in the budget, even a business that sits down, you need to know what you've been spending. This current budget, on page seven of the proposed budget, has an item that talks about fiscal 2023 adopted budget, showing a $24 million deficit. It was, in actuality, a surplus. So why are we showing a deficit? On second area, you know, we're nine, we're beyond three-fourths of the year. This council, you should be looking at year-to-date and projected year-end, not adopted budget from last year. There's no real comparison there. What are they actually spending? Finally, you know, we do have, we do have some indication. On your proposed, in your budget memos, there's a whole discussion about excess funds. Happily, all of our reserves are funded, about $46 million. But there's another $42 million in excess of that. We should not be talking about increase in fees, let alone increase in taxes, when we're sitting on almost double the reserves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. The next item, section of the agenda is special orders of business. Obviously, there's a number of these. Does someone have a motion relative to one or more of them?
I'll move item SP1, SP2, SP3, SP4, SP5, 6, 7, 8, 9. I'll move all of those.
Is there a second? Councilmember Reed moves introduction of ordinances 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, and 85-0-24. Councilmember Wen seconds. I think we begin with a presentation for our budget team.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, Clayton Black, Budget Manager. Here tonight to introduce a handful of ordinances related to the proposed budget presentation. Have just a short slide deck. We've been talking about this now for a little over a month. We've had ward meetings in each of our wards, joint ward meetings, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback and comments and questions on the budget. We continue to post budget memos in response to any and all questions we get from members of the city council on our website as well. So this is a list of the SP1 through SP11 for this evening. I believe we just called a motion on SP1 and through SP9. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's all the budget and tax levies, but not the water or the sewer.
Okay. So we will get started then with SP1, and we just have a short presentation to walk through. Next slide, right there is good. So this shows the changes that we have made to the proposed budget that's now up for consideration by the city council. We've made kind of three big categories of changes to the budget based on the feedback we've received. We've got a new revised CIP that's been incorporated into the budget based on the feedback last week. We made a slight correction in the Good Neighbor Fund based on some information we received after the budget was posted. And then we've incorporated a handful of options from the menu of options that we presented last week as well. So we've incorporated many ideas that we'll walk through here. You can see here the changes then to the budget from the proposed to the revised. Revenues are down $1.6 million. We have incorporated many ideas from that menu of options, but the large, not a large decrease, but the decrease in revenues is really reflective of a smaller planned geo-bond issuance in the revised CIP that's been incorporated. In terms of use of fund balance, that's gone down by $1.4, $1.5 million. That's offset by the $1.5 million in ideas from the menu of options that we've incorporated into the budget. So the net impact to revenues is a reduction of about $3.1 million. On expenses, one, a couple of changes here. One is the reduction in the CIP. So you see a decrease in spending related to CIP. And you also see that decrease that I referenced in the Good Neighbor Fund related to some of those programmatic spending in the community benefits agreement with Northwestern. And so I'll talk a bit more about that. We've talked about that with Finance and Budget Committee, and it's been reflected in each of our presentations as well. So next slide, please. So this lists the individual changes. The screen is being a little funny, so you can't quite see some of the color coding that we tried to do here. But essentially, I'll walk through these in a little more detail. So first, the Good Neighbor Fund. So as you all know, the community benefits agreement with Northwestern included $3 million in direct payments to the city, $1 million of which is for affordable housing, a half million of which the city can use for sustainability efforts, and $1.5 million of which the city can use at its discretion. And for the second year in a row, we've used that to cover expenses in the general fund. The agreement also includes $1.25 million in programmatic spending in other areas, but it doesn't actually identify that the city is a direct recipient of those funds related to racial equity, local workforce development, and downtown revitalization. So those three areas may or may not come to the city as a direct payment. Staff erred in including those in the initial budget, so we're pulling both the revenue and the expense for that. It doesn't mean that the money won't be spent. It just means that it's not definitely passing through the city's coffers and being spent. So the $3 million in direct payments continues to be included. We also made changes related to the CIP. You can see a reduction in planned geo-bonds of about $2.4 million, reflective of Laura's presentation last week. And then Laura's presentation last week also included a slight increase in MFT capital expenses. So you can see they offset each other a little bit as well. And then we move to the menu of options that we discussed last week, and we've incorporated a handful of those. Allison, if you don't mind going to the next slide, it covers it in, Tesh, thank you, in more detail. So these are the options that have been incorporated within the budget, as well as the amounts that we've included to account for them. In taking a look at them and discussing internally about the implementation timeline, a couple of these have gone down by a bit, just given our window of implementation. So for instance, credit card fees. I mentioned we're doing an RFP for a new online, for a new cashiering system. As part of that, we would also need to do an RFP for a new credit card processing vendor. The timeline for that is a couple months, so by the time we get onboard with our new processing vendor, we would probably stand to save about $300,000 next year. Now, in a total year, we're looking at saving about $500,000 in credit card fees, but some of these is going to take a little bit longer to implement. I know we mentioned the vacant property fees last week, and I know that the projection for that originally was quite a bit higher. It may be more than the $20,000 we've included here, but a lot of conversation needs to happen with city council to determine sort of the amount, the eligible properties that would be subject to the fee. And we suspect that would take some time to get off the ground. But looking at the rest of this list, so we have incorporated all the ideas that were tier one last week. And one of the tier two, I can report that we received the 10th response to the survey, which didn't really change the data too much, but it did take one of the ideas, which was the Parks and Recreation Program Fee Increase. And that was a vote in support of that. And so that moved that into what we previously defined as tier one. Everything else generally stayed the same, with a couple ideas kind of staying in that tier two. We chose not to include those. Those two ideas were increasing the bag tax and implementing an administrative adjudication fee. They were kind of in the middle, didn't want to make that judgment call without additional conversation and feedback from city council. And then in the parking fund, four ideas we included in the proposed budget related to credit card fees, residential parking permits, surface lot permits, and meter lots, meter rates on the lakefront. So these are the ideas that we've included in the proposed budget. Now, when you look at the budget ordinance, it's only expenses, so you don't actually see these in the budget ordinance. But we've included the attachment within the items, so you can kind of clearly see all the changes that are being included in the new proposed budget. Next slide. So focusing on the general fund, and this is the budget balancing worksheet that we shared with you previously. Prior to incorporating that menu of options, we were using $12.5 million in fund balance in order to balance the general fund. With these changes, we've incorporated $1.5 million in new and increased revenues, and you can see the impact on fund balance going from $12.5 million down to about $11 million. Next slide. And then one more slide just to show the calendar. So just to repeat, we're here on November 11th. We've hosted both of our public hearings with the city council, all of the joint ward meetings, and discussed this a couple times at city council. So the changes we've made so far are really reflective of the feedback we've received at the 10, 11 meetings to date so far. But we're happy to continue to make, incorporate any feedback we get, make any changes, and we're happy to answer any questions.
So I'm going to go first, actually, just because I have a technical question. Remind us, of the revenue ideas that are incorporated in this draft of the budget, how many of those would require acts of council? What process do you have in mind to effectuate all of that?
Do you want to go back to that list? So some of these are very administrative in nature. I would say about half of these are administrative in nature. Things like the Illinois Local, maybe 25, 25 to 50% of these are administrative in nature. The Illinois Debt Recovery Program is something we can just participate in with the state and start collecting on our past due debt. Enforcement of late fees. I would need to check if Parks and Rec permit fees and community development permit fees, I believe community development permit fees are set in the code, so we would need council action on an ordinance. Parks and Rec fees may be handled more administratively, and those we might be able to increase without action by city council. Implementing a fieldhouse rental program, additional special event permits, probably things we can do administratively. Credit card fees is actually something we can also do administratively. I just, we have that window of time where we have to do implementation on our part. But when it comes to things like rental registration program, the vacant property fees, increasing the long-term care license fee, increasing public works right-of-way permit fees, and potentially Parks and Rec fees, those are all fees that are identified in the municipal code that we would need to, at some point, hopefully in early 2025, or by the end of this year with some of these, depending on action by the city council. Certainly, if you take action on this budget by the end of this month, we can get started in December and try to get some of these in place. If that's not the case, then we'd be looking at January, February to implement some of these.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was going. I just wanted to flag that for those that not only require a council vote but are in the city code and therefore require two council votes, I would recommend that they be at least available on the agenda for introduction when the budget is on the agenda for action. Because if possible, I think it'd be enormously preferable to have the code effectuating the 2025 budget enacted prior to 2025.
In many cases, that's doable. And things like the vacant property fee, where we have to create a new, a whole new fee, and maybe the rental registration program, where it's maybe a whole new program or revisions to the program, those may wait.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I'm happy to work with the Law Department and staff to get a vacant property fee ordinance in front of council by the 25th, I guess, but if that's possible. I do have a few questions before I go to comments. Where is our insurance fund? I know that the insurance fund was in the hole, or in the red, $4 million, I believe, a few years ago. Where is it now?
I mean, yeah, it's doing, good evening, Mayor, the members of city council. Insurance fund is showing the positive fund balance after we transferred $2.5 million last year.
Okay. And what is the insurance fund balance now?
I'll have to check.
Okay.
3.6 million.
Okay.
Required is 3.6. And I think we are floating right around that 3.6 to $4 million, depending on the month.
And how does the, how do we determine the insurance fund balance?
I mean, we looked at the negative balance, so we just wanted to wipe out at least the negative balance, right?
How do we, if there's $3.6 million sitting in the insurance fund now, how do we determine how much money we're going to keep in the insurance fund at any given time?
I mean, we want to keep at least that amount. Now, it depends on the claims, on the legal claims, the payments.
3.6 million, how do we determine 3.6 million?
It's the policy, I think, yeah, let's see. The policy requires three months of health insurance expenses to be kept in reserve.
And why is that the formula?
I mean, that's the city council adapted, so you can always change. These are our own policies, budget policies.
Can I just, Councilmember, do you mind if I interject here?
Sure.
Like, they didn't just throw a dart at the dartboard, though. Like, where does that number come from?
Which number?
3.6 million.
So our health insurance payment is $1.2 million every month.
So the point is, a quarter, quarter year of that?
Three months, yes.
That was the idea that led to 3.6 million? Sorry, Councilmember Reed.
3.6, yeah.
And this is, again, the city council-adapted budget requirements for each different fund, so.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just trying to understand, you know, one of our colleagues mentions quite often about the various funds that we have out there that are maintaining balances that maybe they don't need to. And the insurance fund is one that I'm curious about. I want to also ask about the meter rates. Meter rates on lakefront. Really, the question is, what exactly is, I don't recall the proposal. I'm sure I supported it, but is this just for folks outside of Evanston, or? And what is the new rate? What are we going up to? Do we not have Mr. Rivera here? I'm sorry, Lucas Tataro.
So this was presented at Finance and Budget Committee earlier this year, a couple months ago. So if I'm reading basically, essentially, what? The only point on the memo from Finance and Budget Committee was that Evanston residents with paid wheel taxes don't pay for these increases. So I guess I don't have the details and where I thought they might be.
Yeah, just.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed, for the question. Both Director Rivera and Manager Tataro are online, so they might be able to answer the question for you.
Good evening, members of the city council, Mike Rivera, Interim Administrative Services Director. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So was your question related to lakefront revenue? So lakefront revenue.
No, specifically, I'm sorry, just to get right to it. Specifically curious about the meter rates on the lakefront proposal. What is, what is the movement there? It's the expected revenue of $75,000. How are we gaining that?
With, well, basically, we've been averaging about $325,000 a year in the lakefront revenue, and that's at the current rate of $3 per hour. And that rate is assessed only to non-resident visitors. Anybody with a paid Evanston wheel tax do not have to pay those fees. So arriving at that figure, that would mean an increase of $0.75 to $1, so the existing rate that we have now.
Thank you for that. I just, I'm supportive of this, but I just want to remind us that folks who are not wheel taxpayers or thereby Evanston residents or own property here are already having to pay to access the beach. And I'm fine with, I mean, and. And I'm fine with, I'm not necessarily fine with that, but I really do think it is time for us to continue to consider whether or not Evanston residents should pay for parking at the lakefront. It matches up with our goals and envision Evanston. It matches up with our goals and our climate and our cart plan. We need to start doing this, and I'm unsure why we're not. As we know, just from non-Evanston residents, 325,000 annually, if we were to start charging Evanston residents for parking at the lakefront when we made it free to now go on to the lakefront, you know, we'd see significant revenue and encourage folks to take green forms of transportation to the lakefront. Lastly, on revenue, I would also encourage us to look at the bag tax. Whoever the, of the three or four people who are on the fence about it, $200,000 a year in revenue that is not only borne by Evanston residents but by folks who live in Willmet, Rogers Park, and other communities, Skokie, other communities, and that's based in our goals to make our environment more sustainable, I think is a good way to raise revenue. Lastly, on the revenue front, I've spoken about this before. I think the activists would be amenable to it. We should be doing participatory budgeting again in 2025. I think that it's just been demonstrated by all the new faces that we see at almost every meeting. It feels like there's someone new that participated in PB coming up to speak to us, folks that represent vast swaths of our community and diverse portions of our community. And I think we need to continue that, but I do think that we need to look at, you know, with a $12 million, maybe $11 million deficit this year and next year, looking at adding 2.5 million for the lease for the new Civic Center, for the new City Hall, looking at adding 2.5 because of the change, the state's change in the grocery tax, looking at adding potentially 1.5 or more because of the bonding that we're gonna be doing for CIP this year. We're, yeah, we're in a, we're in a place. And then that's on top of all the stuff that the mayor talked about at the top of the meeting that could come our way. I think we need to have the community's help, I'll wrap up here. We need to have the community's help in finding new revenue. I think the PB process is a perfect process for doing that, so I would encourage us to make the investment in this year, to make the investment, to have PB, to have the community helping us figure out how to fill 3 to 5 million dollars in new revenue. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple questions for staff. One regarding the capital improvement plan, I guess that's probably for Laura Biggs, and then one regarding a potential revenue source, which Clayton and I have talked about. So, since Clayton's here, let me ask about the possibility of implementing a service tax. Knowing that so many of our businesses in town are no longer selling goods but providing services, you know, whether that's anything from a manicure to a haircut to an exercise studio, do we collect sales tax on services in Evanston?
Not on services, only when those service businesses sell some general merchandise that you bring home.
Okay.
And leave the premises with.
So is it worth thinking about imposing some kind of municipal service tax? Is, has this been done anywhere else?
I think state law prohibits us from doing it.
Yeah, I mean, I would defer to Alex on this, but my, it is certainly the case that state law says what items are subject to sales tax. The state of Illinois famously has a pretty narrow tax base that excludes essentially all services. Many other states tax many more services. I don't believe our Home Rule Authority allows us to expand that list, but I would defer to Alex on that.
Good evening, Alex Ruggey, Corporation Counsel. Thank you for the question. The Law Department is happy to look into that further to see if it's an option and get back to all of you, but at this time, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Great. Let's do that research and maybe put that answer on file for this time next year.
Sounds good.
Right, thanks. And then, a question for Ms. Biggs about our CIP. The number has gone down. Can you please refresh my memory as to why the number has gone down? We didn't take any projects off of the list entirely, did we?
No, thank you very much. All of our projects that are on the list are there because there's a genuinely demonstrated need for them to occur. However, we looked at the list and our staffing, and we, staffing if we were fully staffed, because we're always in the process of doing interviews, and we said it's not reasonable for this volume of things to happen anyway, so some projects were just delayed to 2026. In others, where we planned to start the projects, we did not think it was likely we would do all of the spending in one year, that some of the work would be occurring in 2026. So then we shifted some funding to those projects that we're gonna start to 2026, just to reflect the year that it would be spent.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Seeing no further discussion with the clerk, please.
Point of.
I don't know. I'm surprised Councilmember Kelly is, I just wanted to make sure no one online.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. Councilmember Kelly's hand is up. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you.
Point of sticking up for your colleague.
So just a couple of observations. Well, first, I want to thank staff for the weekly memos. It was really great to see what I've been requesting is that breakdown in excess revenue to see that we have about $48 million in excess revenue above and beyond our reserves. That's a lot of money, so thank you for breaking that out. And then, you know, I just think it should be pointed out that our actual budget in '22 was 249 million. Our actual budget in '23 was 290 million, and now we're jumping up to a $400 million proposed budget, or 399, or somewhere thereabouts. That's a big jump, and I, you know, I think I would really like to see us referencing more our actual budgets, and when we have increase, explaining the increase from the last actual budget of 23, 290 million, and why the increases in the different areas that gets us, that gets us from 290 to 400 million. It's a big jump in a year, and I, and I just, I think it's so important to do our budgets based on our actual budget while incorporating changes that have happened in this past year. And I don't see, think we're seeing enough of that to really understand and justify such an enormous jump. So, I think that's my main comment. And then just, and I know how much everybody loves to talk about PPRTs, so I just want to point out, in this document, the PPRT, which my understanding, I think some of the other Finance and Budget members' understanding is that we would apply the maximum allowable, which our Corporation Counsel, I know that Ms. Ruggey did, you know, a fair bit of work on that and calling around to confirm that, yes, we can in fact apply 100%, which is what we said, the full amount. Now, in this document, Mr. Desai says, oh, no, we have to, we have to put some of it towards the IMR. So who, who's right here, or who's wrong? Somewhere that, those two messages are conflicting, so I'd like some clarification about that. I think that's all for the moment. Thank you.
Good evening again. So just to address Councilmember Kelly's question, so the advice provided by the Evanston Law Department was that if the City Council policy adopted called for 100%, legally that would be feasible. This item was brought to the Finance and Budget Committee. They declined to amend the policy or recommend amending the policy to make it be 100%. So the current policy does not require that, which is why Mr. Desai's recommendation is that part of it goes to IMR.
Thank you very much, although the wording in it suggests from Mr. Desai is that we have to put it towards IMR. And I just wanted to clarify, as you have confirmed, that legally, we could in fact put the full amount to the PPRT. Just for the record, I want to make that clear, because again, it looks, the way it's worded in the budget document makes it appear as though we're obligated to. And that's, that's nothing that the state says, as you know, that the IDOR doesn't say, nobody says that, and we even didn't say it on Finance and Budget. We said apply the maximum allowable, which, as you said, we're perfectly within our legal means to apply 100% of the budget. So I just want to make that point clear. Thank you, I appreciate your comments on that.
At this time, no one is asking to speak whose time has not expired. Councilmember Reed?
I just want to make a motion. We're here introducing the 2024, 2025 budget, and we did get a lot of feedback about participatory budgeting, and it currently isn't in the budget, and I think it's, I think it's important that we set aside some funding in this year's budget for participatory budgeting. I know that.
I'm gonna cut you off because Councilmember Hadekatis has a light on, and I know he wants to speak to this issue, and his, his time has not expired. So let him jump in, and you'll see, you can see if you want to jump back in after that. Councilmember Hadekatis.
Sure. So, a bunch of, myself and a bunch of my colleagues have co-sponsored or for all to continue the PB program. I agree, it's incredibly, it, for me, it's been incredibly informative about how to engage people in government, and, you know, given the fact that we're, a lot of people don't have a lot of trust in government right now, it's even more important, I think, for us to continue this program. One of the things, I've been talking to staff, trying to figure out the correct, the correct way to do this policy-wise. We have kind of a proposal in the works to use participatory budgeting to fund capital improvement program projects. This would be capital improvement projects for the year 2026. You know, unfortunately, the last couple times we have tried to get PB in the budget, the timing has been really awful as far as like when to continue the program. Last year at this time, we were still just beginning the process of implementing the programs. The way I see it potentially playing out is that in the next year, we would have idea collection and budget delegates, and the process run from spring through fall, and then the projects that were chosen would be funded in the next year in the capital improvement. And, and then it would be our imperative that those are the most important things because that's what, that's what the public wants. And so, I think trying to find and land on the right number, which I think would be probably 1% of the operating budget, which would be roughly $1 million, is a substantial amount of money for the public to decide on, on projects. The tough thing, and we're working, I've been in talking with City Manager Stowe about this, finding out how to staff things on our side, and also any of the administrative costs. Speaking with Professor Easterday today, we got some information about what it costs to fund the program last time, much bigger program. We probably do not need 2 and 1/2 full-time staff members. Professor Easterday has said that he would continue to give his time pro bono, so it's just a matter of finding a position, I think. So, and also some figuring out the administrative costs. So, hopeful that we can figure this out, but hopefully we'll try to do this without impacting the current year budget, so.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, so thank you for that, and for me not having to use my nonexistent time to explain all of that. I, so, exactly what Councilmember Hadekatis said, although in order to have feedback for the 2026 budget, we have to, as Councilmember Hadekatis said, spend money in 2025 to run the program. We know from the PB process that we had in 2023, I believe, that the cost was about, you know, $300,000. I think we can bring that down, or we set aside about $500,000 altogether. We came in under budget. I think we can get this process done by setting aside about $200,000 to administer the program, to, you know, for staff, for the materials that they'll need to engage the community. So, I would move that we add 200,000, a $200,000 line item to the 2025 budget for participatory budgeting. And I'd also say that I, while I appreciate Councilmember Hadekatis's proposal, I think we need to engage the community in helping us find revenue rather than expenditures, but all of those things can be figured out at a later date. What we need to do now is we know we need, or we know the community wants us to get PB, or to continue PB, so I would, I make that motion.
So, of course, I'm gonna ask for it in writing while you're writing it. So you're asking to add 200, $200,000 line item, and then I guess increase the draw on the General Fund Reserves to pay for that?
Correct.
And while you're writing that, Councilmember Hadekatis, do you think from the scheme that you've been talking about, do you think it's necessary to add this $200,000 line item to make, to make the engagement that would have to be done in 2025 work well?
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I think, I don't want to.
If I can jump in, I served as Chair of the PB Committee, Mayor Bessie, your honor, Councilmember Nusma, and Councilmember Burns. I think from our experience, it is absolutely necessary. We would not have had the successful program that we had when we engaged in this if we didn't have robust funding for childcare, for food, for transportation, for engaging folks in spaces, creating the balloting process, and, and staff. I don't think we need as much, because I think we have a loyal base of folks who want to see this happen and are willing to step up more, but we certainly do need the funding to make the program happen.
Since you mentioned my name, as a member of that committee, I don't think I agree, but still waiting on the motion.
Sorry, was there a second?
The motion fails for lack of a second.
Well, I hit my hand raised, I'll second.
So, okay, so Councilmember Kelly seconds, so that, so now you should.
Yes.
Put it in writing.
May I ask a question while he's doing it?
So there's a couple people in line. Councilmember Reed, are you okay with me continuing to go down the list? All right, so we'll start with Councilmember Nusma, who has four minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for City Manager Stowe regarding staff availability and staff requirements for supporting this type of initiative.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, for that question. I believe we probably could cobble together 1.0 FTE to provide some staffing for PB if that's the council's desire.
Is that within the current budget, or?
Within existing budget funds.
Within the existing budget.
Correct.
Okay. Without adding additional 200,000.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly with two minutes left.
Okay, I guess that was my question. So then I would withdraw my second, given, given the information that's.
That's not out there.
So the motion fails for lack of a second.
Point of order, what we're saying is that we're creating a line item, regardless if we need to add additional funding or not, I think this council, by voting on this, will be given direction to, to, to set aside 200,000.
It is certainly true that we welcome staff working hard and coming in under budget, but I wouldn't say that it's best practice to appropriate something that we've just been told isn't necessary, isn't necessary to achieve the desired objective.
Well, I'm unclear where this $200,000 is coming from, then. If we could do, why aren't we, we're raising fees and taxes for $200,000, then if we just have $200,000 to throw to this.
So just to, just to clarify, I believe we have existing capacity where we could cobble together 1.0 FTE to provide the capacity or staffing to provide a PB program if the council wishes, without having to allocate an additional $200,000.
I mean, let me just be a little more loose in my, I mean, the, the, the plan for the 2025 budget does not pre-allocate every person hour in the city manager's office. Those are allocated. Those are allocated as the year goes on based upon the priorities that come from up here. And so I think part of what Luke is saying is that his plan, like every single year, is to allocate that staff time, especially in the CMO, based upon what the city council most wants to see happen. And that if this is a priority of city council, it will be absolutely possible to put together one FTE within the city manager's office to effectuate that priority. Did I, is that fair, Mr. Stowe?
That's correct.
Just point of order, the, the program or point of information, the program is more than just staff. There's costs with, again, withholding the engagement. The, helping, there's stipends for budget delegates that we had the last time that made the program successful. There's funding to advertise the program. There's funding for the balloting process. There's, it's much more than just putting some time, staff time toward it. There's a whole host of costs that come along with this. And if, and it's over $25,000. And so are we saying that we're just gonna run a program like we did with our budget town halls and have two people show up because we didn't put in the work to advertise it and engage people? Or we, what are we saying here? We have to set aside some money and unless the manager is saying that there's also, you know, 50, 60, $100,000 that they can allocate on top of the staff time to get the message out there about PB, then we're setting ourselves up for failure.
Councilmember Hadekatis with a minute 50 left.
So some of the answers to that, like just in my discussion today with Professor Easterday is that I think some of the costs for the digital outreach, I, I think we have to reassess pretty much all our, like, we just, like, literally this afternoon, got the spreadsheet with, you know, the, the line items with what they spent. And so I think reevaluating like what we should do in the future, because a lot of that was startup cost. So I think a lot of the, the digital outreach and things, we do not have to do this time. So I think we would have a much more accurate idea of what it's gonna cost in like a week or so. And that's something, you know, we can dive into. So rather than have like a, just a ballpark figure.
I'm happy to, if I may close out here.
Quickly, please.
Yes. I'm, I'm happy to withdraw this motion and maybe it's been withdrawn for me, but again, one of the largest costs was $500 per budget delegate for their time committing to this. And I think if we're not mimicking the things that made our last program successful, we shouldn't be doing this. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
My hand, my hand is
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Kelly.
Sorry, so I, I think it's also about transparency in budgeting. So, you know, if there's a majority that feel they'd like to see this funded, I don't think we just say, we'll find the money and then create a position. I think we have to be very transparent. We're, we're either doing this or we aren't. So I agree with waiting and we get, get our numbers together, but I, I do think we need to act on an amount that we're specifically dedicating for the participatory budgeting. That's all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordan? Councilmember, could, could you remind us what we're, whatever we're voting on?
The budget and all the taxes and everything. I mean, for introduction, but yeah, the whole, it's, it's SPs 1 through 9.
Just, just checking. Aye.
Thank you for the clarity. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
There's no sound.
Councilmember Kelly?
There's no sound on the
There we go, try again.
Oh, Councilmember Kelly?
I think for the record, maybe we should recall the roll.
Yeah. Okay.
Can somebody in the room say?
All right, there should be, the sound should be working again.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna restart the roll from the beginning.
Okay. Councilmember Saffordan?
No.
We can't hear you.
Oh, maybe it's just me.
Or anything you're saying.
All right, we're gonna try this again.
If you're speaking, we can't hear you. And now we can't see.
Well, the
All right, so the belief is it might be working for now. So we're gonna try one more time and if this doesn't work, we're gonna have to, we're gonna pause and, nope.
It started and then it stopped.
We could just
Okay, this is a new experiment. Let's hope that we stay audible for a minute. We'll keep our eyes on the phantom mute button. So we're gonna restart the roll call from the beginning on the motion that was made by Councilmember Reed and seconded by Councilmember Nguyen to introduce items SP 1 through 9. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight minutes, with eight members voting in favor and one voting against after what seems to have been a very contemplative few minutes, the motion carries and the ordinances are all introduced and will all appear on the next city council agenda for action. The two special orders of business that remain are items SP 10 and 11. Is there a motion relative to one or both of those?
I move, I'll move item SP 10, ordinance 93024, amending city code 71217, charges, rates, fees and penalties. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves introduction of ordinance 93 dash O dash 24. Councilmember Hadekatis seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordan? Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Councilmember Kelly, we couldn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 93 dash O dash 24 is introduced and will appear on the next city council agenda for action. And now on item SP 11, is there a motion?
I'll move item SP 11, adoption of ordinance 94024, amending city code 7133, decreasing the sewer user rates. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves introduction of ordinance 94 dash O dash 24. Councilmember Hadekatis seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordan? Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 94 dash O dash 24 is introduced and will appear for action on the next city council agenda. This brings us now to the consent agenda. Are there items that members of the council would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
HS1?
HS1?
PD1.
ED1? Any, are any further items besides HS1 and ED1?
PD1.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes. Oh, you didn't say ED, you said PD. Sorry. They are similar sounding letters. Thank you for the clarification. So we have items Planning and Development 1 and Human Services 1. Is there anything else to be removed?
A5.
A5?
And then I will move the consent agenda minus items A5, PD1 and HS1. And then someone says.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves adoption of the consent agenda with the exception of the following three items, A5, PD1 and HS1. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda with the three items previously named, accepted, is adopted. Now on item A5, Councilmember Nusma, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move approval of a sole source purchase of two AutoView Sharp Z3 license plate recognition systems for parking division operations.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of this sole search per purchase for two AutoView Sharp Z3 license plate recognition systems. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Who on staff can speak to this?
Councilmember, Councilmember Reed, Luke Tatar is online, available to speak.
Hi, Luke.
I apologize, Councilmember, for my connection issues and thank you very much, Michael, for answering the question. Thank you for always getting my back. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I am curious, were you around for public comment? Did you hear the gentleman who had, or was there a gentleman, I think, that had questions about this? Did you catch any of those?
I did, I'm sorry, I did not.
Okay.
It's, as a point of information, this is the, one of the questions that I included in my regular packet to staff, so we do all have an answer in front of us.
Luke, can you run through that? So the question is regarding existing license plate reader, readers that we have in our possession already?
Yes, of course. So LPR is a license recognition software. We use them in the parking department to check for citation, check for the CD stickers, check for the, if parkers are paying for the parking. We use this, we use this equipment for establish how long the vehicle is parked. So it's crucial piece of equipment for the parking operation since we don't have stickers anymore for the vehicle stickers, for the wheel text. And since we don't have a single space meters, this is what we use to enforce. We have right now nine vehicles who have a LPR system. The original was installed in 2012, so right now they go on the age of 12 years old. Since we purchased the two brand new vehicles, we are ready, the LPR system already went twice, was repurposed when we were purchased the new vehicles. So right now the manufacturer say this is the time when we should start upgrade to the new, new version.
Okay, and I don't know if, in your response there, you quite got to it, maybe I missed it, but why can't we use the existing license plate readers from the existing vehicles and transfer them to these new ones?
Yeah, because we already did it twice, so they're from 2012, so they almost end of their life cycle.
So they just had the end of their life cycle. Okay.
So we just wanna think ahead because of the installation cost included. So if this equipment will be not support the next couple of months, or let's say something is going wrong, and next year, I will still have to pay for de-installation, installation of new equipment. So we try to be proactive and since all, since all nine of them are almost 12 years old, this makes sense right now to start to gradually replace them with the new model.
Okay, thank you for that. And then to a separate concern that was raised in the evening about a separate technology, but similar, similar technology, similar function. Can you discuss where the, the data for the, you know, when, where does the data go once it's collected?
So I, I hear that comment about the, the cameras around the city. So this is totally different type of the data we collect. Because we are not law enforcement, so we can only dig into the Secretary of State database to see where the vehicles register or not. And after, I think, 60 days or 30 days, data disappears, wherever we collected is just disappearing from the, from the clock out.
And so is this data that's held by the city or held by an outside vendor?
It's, we, we operate on the data which is provided from Secretary of State, so it's the government data.
I'm sorry, Nguyen, thank you for that. I'm specifically referring to when a reader reads a license plate, all of the data that's collected there. One, what data is collected there? I'm assuming the location of the vehicle, the registrar, the person who the vehicle is registered to, what is the data that's collected and then where does that data go?
I don't have a specific answer for that question right now. I can, I can check with our vendor exactly and then get back to you.
Thank you.
Councilor Nusma? Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the purchase is approved. Now on item PD1, Councilmember Burns, do you have a motion?
PD1.
Move approval of ordinance 95024, special use for planned development for a mixed-use building in 61 through 1631 Chicago Avenue in the D4 downtown transition district.
Second.
It's for introduction, right?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns moves introduction of ordinance 95 dash O dash 24. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, we, we mostly discussed this in committee. I I, I said there, and I'm not gonna necessarily repeat it, but I, I do think we need to, to make sure that our processes are, are clear, concise, that folks who are coming into town to develop and help us solve our affordability and lack of, our, our, our lack of housing, folks who are helping us solve those issues, we need to make sure that we can move them through the process. We need to make sure that folks who are, who have legitimate concerns, that those concerns are addressed, but folks who are simply, you know, potentially NIMBY, not in my backyard, or that, that those concerns aren't outweighing the need for affordable housing. I am curious, earlier it was mentioned that the bonuses are complex. One of my colleagues, I think, used that terminology. I, I just wanna dig into that a bit to understand are they, how, how are they complex? And then it was mentioned, you know, that we need to clean them up. What does that mean?
Well, Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. We start from a base number of units. And if there are a certain number of Well, Sarah Flax, Community Development Director, we start from a base number of units, and if there are a certain number of affordable units in that base.
If I can, just in the interest of time, I'm, I'm familiar with the
Yep.
ordinance to some degree myself, but I, I'm asking just specifically to identify, where is the complexity?
The complexity is
Or perceived complexity.
Well, if, I think it's because sometimes people expect when it says you have a ten percent affordability, they don't realize that the bonuses come over and above that and are outside that affordability requirement.
Well, no, that, that's what was mentioned earlier.
The inclusionary.
Was mentioned as complex earlier, and so I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, and, and
So what
Maybe I can ask my colleague. Their, because, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm sure I'm the one who said it was complex, because It's, it's just, it's hard to calculate. I, I have to get the numbers. Infirm me again. Maybe it's. I wish you told me you were going to ask this.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, my, my apologies. It wasn't meant to be a gotcha question, but just.
If you give me, give me about two minutes and I'll
Yeah, and I'll, I'll pause my time there, and if anyone else wants to. Okay, no one else. What, what I'll say is, I, I do think that our ordinance is imperfect, but I, I do think that we need to do our best to stick to it. This project began working its way through council in two thousand and seventeen before over half of us were on the city council, and That's just not going, that, that process can't continue if we want to reach the goals that I, I think will be laid out in our both comprehensive plan and our project, oh geez, in our Envision Evanston two thousand and forty-five process, so. And I was a bit concerned by the comment that we need to clean it up. I, I, I think our ordinance has the right balance, and, and I'm just really curious to hear where it needs to be fixed, and maybe even from the developers, if you have, if you can share where you think our ordinance is complex, or where there've been difficulties for you that we could learn from this experience, and then, before you
Shall I tell why?
Yeah, let me, my colleague go first.
Okay. So I was just trying to calculate the different numbers there. So the developer's providing eight affordable housing units onsite, and because they're onsite, there's a, a bonus, and so a bonus of four, four, four bonus units per onsite unit, so it's thirty-two bonus units. The zoning allows, in this district, fifty-four market rate units. If the developer is seeking a hundred and ten units, a hundred and ten minus the thirty-two bonus units gets to seventy-eight, so the allowance that would be requested would be, there, seventy-eight minus the fifty-four that the, that the zoning district allows. I'm sure I find that complicated.
Think, no.
But that, but that turned out to be not the right answer.
That's right.
Yeah, that.
Well, well, no, because I, so I was arguing
That they should have the whole seventy
I argued privately to Sarah Flax that shouldn't we
Include the bonus units?
No, no, no. Wouldn't it make sense, wouldn't it be reasonable that we would ask to have some affordable units from the twenty-four
The thirty-two.
No, the, of the twenty-four, if the allowance, if the allowance, if the, the allowance needed is twenty-four units, that's the difference between the seventy-eight and the fifty-four. So if, if they're asking basically for an allowance of twenty-four units, shouldn't we be asking them for ten percent of that to be affordable units? Shouldn't we, couldn't we ask for an additional two affordable units, inclusionary units?
I think my understanding of what you just shared is that part of the unit, go ahead.
Could I, so the number of units that are subject to the percentage calculation are seventy-eight, and they're providing eight affordable units, which is seven point eight rounded up to eight. So they are, that's the ten percent, and then the thirty-two bonus units are on top of that and don't figure into the calculation for affordable housing. So the base zoning allowed fifty-four units, they're requesting a variance for twenty-four more, which gets us to the seventy-eight.
And I think the difference in calculation
They're actually calling for a hundred and ten.
Well, the, the hundred and ten is the total after the bonus units are added.
I think, I, I found it complex, I'm sorry.
I, it has its complicating factors. I, I think it's not the simplest.
Yeah, I think that's
I, I think that the difference of calculation here is Councilmember Revell is applying, is applying the, is sort of creating three categories of units for the purpose of the calculation, the as-of-right units, the extra units being granted legislative authority, and the bonus units, and for the purpose of the calculation, those first two are the same bucket, and so that's just seventy-eight, seventy-eight divided by ten is seven point eight, rounded up is eight, and so that's, I think, I'm not going to weigh in on whether it's confusing, those are two very imaginable things a person might do, and so you did one, and the other one is the rule, and maybe that's the definition of confusing, I don't know. Councilmember Reed still has the floor if you want to.
I, I did want to get an answer just from you all, from your perspective of what has been complex or difficult about this process, and as we're engaging this.
Sure, and it, I think it's actually fairly simple. Again, Michael Esger, on behalf of the applicant, Horizon Group Twenty-three, so the, the, the only difficulty is when we're trying to present this in a community setting or in a, another venues, the common way that you would think of ten percent is, well, you have a hundred and ten units, shouldn't you have ten or eleven units of affordable, because that's ten percent, and so it's hard to, it's hard for some people to understand that, no, it's not that, it's, you're, you're, otherwise you're charging us or requiring more affordable units on top of the bonus that we're getting, so we would be like doubling down on the affordable. If, by, by right, we could do the fifty-four, so that would be five units, and then, so we'd only be doing five, now that we're getting this twenty-four unit allowance, we're doing eight, because we have seventy-eight, and then the bonus on top of that is, so it's just, it's, it's that, it's that difference that is hard to just sometimes explain to people, you obviously get it, you guys obviously understand it, the staff understands it, there's nothing going on unusual here, and it's frankly the same that's been applied across to every other project, so, including the other project that's here tonight, so.
And, and I guess what I'm really asking you is, separate of that fact completely, just if there's something that you can teach us, the council, from this process that we can improve on as we're working on.
It, it would be good if when we're in, in a community meeting, when we're getting questioned, or people are perhaps being critical because they think that we're fudging the math, if the people that, if, it could be spoken up on by city officials or whoever is in these meetings to say, no, they're doing it right, like, because no one's going to trust the, the developer, right, like, they're not, they're not trusting the developer, it seems like, and if somebody that was there that understood this could say, no, just so you know, they're doing it right, that would be helpful. So that would be one thing. But, but we didn't find it to be too confusing, and I think we, from, from our standpoint, we're very comfortable with the calculation, we're comfortable that we're providing all the affordable onsite, we know that our project is providing more affordable onsite than any other downtown project that I'm aware of, maybe except for the Varsity, which only has three units, but other than that, we're, what our affordable is, and the legacy is, is higher than other downtown projects, so.
If I could just add one quick comment as a developer, the city pads, that I actually like the policy because it gives incentives to developers to do affordable onsite, and those bonus units are meaningful to our projects.
Right.
Is also to adding additional affordable housing. So it may be a little complicated, but I think it's a really good policy.
Thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, so, how much time do I have left? Minute?
A minute forty-two.
Minute forty-two, all right. So I, I, I think we're in a good place. One of the questions I was going to ask is, you know, is the policy as it stands with the four bonus units, is that actually incentivizing you all? It seems like it certainly incentivized you all to get, to add some additional units. I'll close with, with this. We never adopted the downtown plan. From my knowledge, can somebody correct me on that, right? The downtown plan was never adopted. There, you know, right across the street from where these folks are, there's a very tall building, and I think the fact that we lost out on essentially double the number of, potentially double the number of affordable units because of seemingly arbitrary height concerns based on a vision of people twenty-some-odd years ago that was never adopted by council about how the downtown should taper down is unfortunate, and I think we need to start codifying our vision for the city if we, in fact, are going to live by it like it's law, in order to, to Councilmember, Councilmember Revell's point, to begin to remove some of the complexity from this. We can't have a bunch of plans out there that are informing council decisions that aren't adopted by law, and so I, I would encourage us to really fight to get the things that we believe in, in the new comprehensive plan that will be adopted by council, in the new zoning code that will be adopted by council, so we can create a clear path for folks to come into our community and help make it a better place. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Newsma.
Yeah, I was hoping at the end of that, there was going to be a plug for Envision Evanston, so I was waiting on that. Good. Just so I'm not confused, because I, I didn't think this was confusing, is that we're, we're approving the, the request for additional units from the fifty to the seventy-eight or whatever it is, that's, is that part of, that's part of what we're, would be approving this evening, right, so the, I think Mayor Biz explained it the way I understand it is that we're just, the ten percent assumes that we're going to also approve their requests for more units, and so we're only applying the ten percent on those units and not the bonus units that they get, so that's the way I understood it, it's really just, it's, you're, we're applying it, we're not applying the ten percent to the bonus units. I saw it as simple as that, if it's not, please help correct me. I think this is, ten, ten percent is the inclusionary housing ordinance, and so I think while we can certainly encourage people to, to do more than that, you know, they, you know, they're, they're, they're meeting the, the current requirement, we're, we're discussing increasing that amount, and I, I think it's at ACDC, I can't remember if we voted it, I think we voted it out of ACDC committee, and, and it's on its way to council, but we're looking at going from ten percent to, is it twenty, fifteen, fifteen percent? Is it fifteen or twenty? It was fifteen, right? And I think that's the way to, I, I think if, if we want developers to do something different, the way to do it is to amend our coordinate ordinances to make that a requirement. We have not done that, and so, you know, I'm, I'm satisfied with as long, so long as they're meeting the ten percent requirement, which they are, and, and I'm really excited about what we're going to be piloting on Jackson and Emerson, this council authorized us to, to develop, staff to develop an RFP, a community engagement RFP, because what I would love to see in the future is that we can arrive at this point faster. Like, that's what I would love to see, because I actually, I'm incredibly excited with where we are. The community came in, we got the right height as far as the community is concerned, we have, we're going to have an alley that, I think initially, from talking to the development team, they were probably going to improve maybe twenty-five percent of the alley, now it's a hundred percent. That's what you want, right? You want, you know, the design Evanston came in, and it sounds like they've made some, some exterior improvements to the project. To me, all those are, are really excellent contributions and things that we shouldn't, I, I, I don't see that as a negative, I see that as a positive part of how this proposal has developed. I wish it just happened faster, and so one of the things we're doing on Jackson and Emerson is trying to front-load that community engagement process, which could inform a future development process, so by the time it gets to council, all that's worked out, right, and too many times, we, you know, it doesn't get worked out until the very end of the process, and, and that's after all the money has been used to hire consultants and different experts to design these proposals, which is expensive, so it, it's something I, I, I'm looking forward to doing, and, and I think it could be informative for how we do these in the future, but I think this is a great project and happy to support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some additional commentary on, on process and requirements, really not specifically about the project. I can follow the math, the math makes sense, it's simple math, you know, my kids could have done it in third grade, you're just adding, but it is confusing. When you say the inclusionary housing ordinance is ten percent, and we've got a building with a hundred and ten units, which is in full compliance, and it's in compliance with eight units, like, that's confusing. We have three numbers that don't add up, or that, that don't multiply up, and so that's confusing, and the same kind of confusion applies when we're talking about building height, and do you count parking, levels of parking, do you not count levels of parking? Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't, sometimes you kind of do, and so that confusion is built into the system, and I want one of the outcomes of Envision Evanston for that confusion to be eliminated from the system, so it's clear, not only for the developers who live and breathe it every day, not only for council who lives and breathes, breathes it three or four times a year, but for the general public, when they are reading something and doing math, simple math in their heads, and the numbers all add up, and so part of what we want to do with Envision Evanston is make it more prescriptive, these are the things we require, period. Not, these are the things we require, and here are some things we would like, and then let's, then let's haggle. Like, it's that haggling gray area, I think, that the developers are really discouraged about, which, what uncomfortable from a council perspective, and that, and I think we should be very clear about what we want. If we want more affordable housing, require it, period. If we want less parking, don't require that, period, and make the process simpler in that regard for everybody involved, and I think that speaks to the transparency that I think we all desire from the, the perception of the public as well, so. Just some commentary in the process. Circling back to affordable housing on this particular development, would love to see more.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, yes, and I, it, it is confusing, and I've heard also from Land Use Commission, Chair and others, that they, this really is a, you know, this does need to be cleaned up and simplified. We do have a relatively weak inclusionary housing ordinance, and I think we all would like to see more units here, we'd like to see the, a full ten percent of the hundred and ten, but yes, I know we can all, you know, stop and break down the numbers, and, and like, say even the parking floors, the whole thing is a bit of a debacle in terms of how we get to, how we get to that, and, and in terms of allowing the public to really understand, so I think we absolutely need to strengthen that IHO, it should be, you know, ten, at least ten percent onsite, should be our, what we, what is required, so. But that aside for a moment, I mean, and I have, and I appreciate the conversations I've had with the attorney, Ms. Jazger, about this, and I even spoke to if we could even consider at least maybe swapping one of the one bedrooms or the studios for a two-bedroom, even that would help a bit, because what we really do need are larger units that are affordable, I mean, we need more affordable units, period, but particularly larger units with two bedrooms or more, so if that could be entertained in, between now and the next, when it comes back for final action, you know, that would help matters as well with affordability, but I do want to say overall, you know, I am pleased with the direction that this has gone in, I know, I appreciate the collaboration with the community, all the work that the community's done, and the team, the Horizon, the Legacy team, the architects, the attorneys, the property owners, the Michaels, and I think we really did have gotten to a much better place where this, this project really does conform and integrate better in this, in this transitional zone, which is no, there's nothing arbitrary about this, this is a, you know, D four transitional zone down to a residential area, and so I think this really does mesh much better, and I appreciate the time that the architect took with me to work on, really trying to honor that, that lower level and bring the eye down to the pedestrian, to the ground-level space where there, there will be retail, I think that's been effective, so, so thank you. I, I will be supporting this, but again, I also would like to see more affordable units, but it is our current, you know, system that we have in place at the city that allows for this, so, thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll? Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffron?
I abstain. There were some comments made by Representative the developer that were relayed to me that would create the appearance of a conflict of interest. So I choose to abstain on this and any votes relating to this project.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstaining, the motion carries and ordinance 95-0-24 is introduced. Now on item HS1, is there a motion?
I'll move item HS1, ordinance 70-0-24, meaning Title V, Chapter 3, landlord and tenant regulations, and Title IX, Chapter 4 of the city code, dogs, cats, animal, and foul. And then, just a reminder, the next part is a second. Second.
You guys. Councilmember Reed moves introduction of ordinance 70-0-24. Councilmember Haddakatis seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Well, actually, no, my colleague pulled it off.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Reed.
Sure. Well, I've, in our memo, it talks about how many pet-friendly rental units we have in the community, and, and how many of them have breed restrictions or size restrictions. It seemed to me, so, 75, 75% of these units, how do I, 75% of the pet-friendly rental units do have some kind of size restriction. So, if, if we adopt this ordinance, I worry that, are they gonna then suddenly not become pet-friendly residents, units? And then will these tenants need to move or get rid of their pets or something? I think, I'm, I'm concerned about unintended consequences of passing this.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma.
I'll remove myself. I'm gonna hear what you have to say.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo Councilmember Revel's concerns. I'm okay with the license and rabies language proposed as part of Section 943, but as Councilmember Revel said, I am afraid that if we don't allow landlords some kind of ability to control the pets in their building, that they will decide not to allow any pets at all. And that would be bad for pets, pet owners, and for the cost of housing. Buildings that do allow pets would be in shorter supply, and costs would go up in those buildings. So I don't find this proposed ordinance in congruence with our city council goal for affordable housing. So, I'm gonna oppose at least that half of it. I'm gonna oppose that half of it. I would support the-
Opposing the whole thing.
The rabies is fine.
Sure.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Burns.
Yeah. Go, go ahead. Councilmember Burns asked to go first. I am collegial today, so.
I know he wants to, I wanna give you the closing argument.
Councilmember Burns, followed by anybody else who wants to speak, and then Councilmember Reed, apparently at the back of the list.
Even Councilmember Newsma, when you just said, you know, you, you want housing providers to have control over, you know, the animals that they allow, or something like that. I hear that, I hear public comments, and every time I hear one of those comments, it's like deviating away from what's before us. The only thing that we're considering, that we would be considering today by adopting this, is, is you can't discriminate against breed. That's it. Right? Like, you can, because this happened earlier with, with the gentleman who was at public comment. I went to him, talked to him, and he said yet again that, that this would prohibit a housing provider from being able to discriminate versus size, and it doesn't. Like, if you wanna say, and, and, and so, if you, if you prohibit by weight, and, and let's say you wanna exclude rottweilers and pit bulls, you could still do that. You could still say, alright, you know, dogs of a certain weight, you know, certain size, certain weight, you know, I don't, this is just saying, as I understand it, you cannot discriminate based on breed. And so, I just wanna make sure that regardless of how you vote on this, that, that that's clear. Because it's not, I don't think it's fair to, it's almost like, we, we get focused on what we're voting, and then when people make their remarks, they kinda, you know, veer off from that, and would make it appear as if we're, we're trying to, this is, would remove the ability for a landlord to prohibit anything around dogs or animals, and that's not the case. So I just wanna make that clear. And because of that, I support this. Again, it's just breed. If you can show me some research that suggests that the unintended consequence that we're concerned about has happened anywhere else where this has been applied, then I would be convinced by that. And if you can show that, that again, there's any research to suggest that, that, that the behavior of animals has more to do with breed than, than, than their, their environment they were brought up in, that would be convincing. And I've seen those, I couldn't have been able to find any research, nor has, has that been provided by my colleagues. So, I'd love us to stay close to what the research is saying. And, and again, if we can provide any proof that those unintended consequences have played out, I can come up with all types of different unintended consequences that I believe were gonna happen. I'm sure this has been applied in other areas. Has that, you know, has, has those unintended consequences produced themselves in those places? I'd love to, to get that information. And we've had some time for that, that research to be provided to us, and, and it has not. So, again, I would support this, as long as it's specific to breed. It would not prohibit somebody from having regulations that would prohibit certain sized dogs or the weight of dogs, et cetera.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Yeah, for, this originally passed unanimously in Human Services. Thank you, Councilmember Burns, for laying that out. We are only talking about breed here. There is no evidence that there is a, a difference in behavior in, because of the breed, between pit bulls and, you know, you know, other breeds that make those animals more prone to attack people, purely because of their breed. But what we do know is that these dogs have become stand-ins for racial groups who tend to be associated with these breeds. We watched as the, you know, what is now referred to as the pit bull was seen as the all-American dog, you know, almost 100 years ago. And as we moved into the 60s and 70s, and these dogs became associated with inner-city people of color, we know that there is a shift in the view, and that these, as housing laws changed, these breed restrictions were used as a stand-in for race, and for keeping certain socioeconomic classes out of buildings. Now, I don't think that's why these policies are in place today. It's not an intentional attempt to keep people of color or lower-income people out, but because of the association, the vestiges of racism, the vestiges of classism that exist within our psyche today, that folks hold these beliefs about certain breeds that are impacting folks across our community. So we talk about the unintended consequences, as Councilmember Burns pointed out, and as we have provided much time for anyone concerned to provide data to back up, that, we haven't seen the data on the quote-unquote unintended consequences. But we do know that today there are unintended consequences around folks who own certain breeds of dogs that aren't able, that have difficulty finding housing in our community. And as Councilmember Revel pointed out with the data, roughly, you know, that, that a decent percentage of those units that are pet-friendly are off limits to some of those folks. And so, again, someone can still discriminate on the size of the animal, the weight of the animal, but it would be a blanket prohibition, and not just on breed, again, which has historically been used as a stand-in for race. And so, I encourage us to support this. We always have the ability. I would encourage us to, in a year or two, maybe even three years, to come back and look at this sampling of data that was prepared for us, and see if the numbers have shifted. But I do think that the market will dictate that folks do not move in draconian ways to prohibit animals and pets in their housing units, and in fact, what we'll do is we'll see a positive impact with this ordinance. So I encourage a yes vote. Thank you.
A few people wanna speak for a second time, but first, I just wanna do a little, just provide a concierge service here. So, a bunch of things that were just said were sort of like, true in spirit but not in fact. The ordinance before you guys does prohibit discrimination based on weight, but there's another ordinance right behind it in the packet that would not?
Yeah, the, the ordinance that I put forward did not have a weight ban.
Okay. So then, okay, so the ordinance before us is the one about which everything was just said?
Correct.
So why is there a recommendation to amend that?
Good evening, Allison Lipstick, our policy manager. The police department wanted to remove the vaccine requirement, so that was separated out, so a new ordinance was created. But according to the Animal Welfare Board, they wanted to add the weight restriction, so that got added in there, I, as I understand it. So the, so the old ordinance has-
No weight restriction.
No weight restriction, but just the breed restriction, and it also has the vaccine requirement. The new ordinance has the breed restriction, the weight restriction, no vaccine requirement.
So, if I, if, well-
Alright, so, we'll go, now that we understand-
Sorry.
We'll go back for a second opportunity, beginning with Councilmember Revel, with four minutes left.
Well, Allison basically said what I was gonna say, which was the Animal Welfare Board sent us an email saying that we should prohibit, you know, prohibit rent, landlords from prohibiting animals based on size, because that would be what they would revert, revert to if we focused on the breed. So, it is complex.
Continuing with second opportunities, Councilmember Burns, with two and a quarter minutes left.
I just also want us to recognize that if we look at animal shelters, I would imagine across the country, but certainly in Evanston, there are all pit bulls in there, for the most part. There's a lot. You know, and, again, I'll, there's been any research on it, but I think it's pretty obvious that one of the driving factors has to be because of, we, there are not many ordinances, if at all, in our area like this, where someone can provide that their home is the dog's home as well. And so they have to make the tough decision whether or not to keep the dog without the knowledge of the housing provider, or leave it somewhere, or, you know, turn it into the animal shelter. So I just want us to be mindful of that, that, that there is an actual consequence that is playing out in our society, where if, again, if you look at animal shelters, the most popular dog breed is the one that, right now, everybody can discriminate against and restrict them from, you know, in, in their rental properties. And again, I don't think that's by, by accident. That is the actual consequence of not moving forward with ordinances like this.
Councilmember Reed, with a minute 50 left.
I'm sorry, did Councilmember Newsma flip the, his, no? Okay. Yeah, for, for those who originally came in saying that they're concerned about the weight restriction, well, our Animal Welfare Board says that they actually want us to address that particular issue. And so, you know, I think this ordinance, the ordinance that I put forward, I think is a middle ground between those two places, and so I would encourage us to adopt that. And then, if in fact, we see movements in the numbers that Councilmember, that staff prepared and Councilmember Revel highlighted, then we can go back and maybe add what the Animal Welfare Board is, is asking. But I, I do think that, you know, moving forward with either the ordinance as presented, that the police department would, would like us to see pass in regard to their portion of it, or moving forward with the full ordinance that the Animal Welfare Board supports, I think either one of those is, is appropriate tonight, and I think choosing that middle option makes the most sense based on the concerns that I heard shared tonight. And so I would encourage a yes vote on the version that does not include, at a minimum, I would encourage a yes vote on the version that does not include the weight restriction. Just for clarity, I wanna, I moved ordinance 70-0-24. That is the correct?
They have the same number.
Okay, they have the same number.
So the one that you moved has, does not have the size restriction, and does have the new vaccine mandate.
Yeah, so that's-
So now, Councilmember Newsma, with four minutes left.
Thank you. I'm just gonna reiterate, I think it is a very foreseeable consequence, because I have been told by landlords in my neighborhood that if they don't have any power to regulate what dogs are in their buildings, then they will have no choice but to forbid dogs entirely. Having said that, I would like to understand why the police department has requested that the rabies language be removed, because that seems to me like it would have been uncontroversial and fairly straightforward, but maybe I'm missing something.
Not at all. You're totally correct. They wanted it removed and amended so that they could put a, an enforcement provision behind it, and it's coming for introduction on the, either the 25th or the, or December 9th. So it was taken out so that it could be dealt with separately. So it's coming.
They got it. Okay.
Makes sense?
Yes. I, I, I think I'm going to be voting no on, on the motion, knowing that the rabies stuff is coming back to us. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Was that referred?
It was a part of the original, it's been broken off from the original referral.
But we didn't break it off, did we?
Well, you would if you voted to amend the, if you voted to amend the ordinance as recommended in the packet.
I just like the, if that's, if that was a new, if that was new, if it came out of this discussion, I think it, it should be attached to something that was referred, is all I'm trying to say. I don't understand how it could be broken off and voted on separately if it wasn't referred.
That's fine.
Just point of order for, to get clarity on, for my colleagues what we're voting on.
Doesn't happen, you know, it should be tied to something.
Sorry, Councilmember Reed?
I just wanna make sure that I'm, we're all clear on the ordinance that I'm moving. Can someone give me a page number in the packet, or? So it's 70-0-24. There are two versions.
It's the version that begins on page 394 of the packet. And so then, when you scroll down to the middle of page 395, you just see a paragraph about breed, not an adjacent paragraph about weight. And when you, and then when you scroll further down-
At the rabies.
To the bottom of page 396, you see some stuff about rabies.
Which is what the police department wanted us to-
To take out.
Yeah.
Put the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revel? No. Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Kelly?
She's no longer online.
Oh. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Oh, well, there's a four-four tie. This is exciting. I wasn't ready for this. So I will break the tie. I'll vote in the affirmative, but I'll say that I would ask that, will this come back in two weeks? I'll just, I don't think that it should be passed in this form, and so, I would, I would recommend that, at a minimum, the issue of the vaccination be handled in a manner consistent with what the police department is comfortable with before this be actually passed. With five voting in favor and four voting against, ordinance 70-0-24 is introduced and will appear for action and hopeful amendment at the next city council meeting. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Saffron?
Thanks. I guess, question of staff, there are some errors in the draft, Envision 2045 plan that was released- was released, most notably, some parks were shown as residential, and I understand there's corrections coming. Does anybody know when those corrections will be forthcoming? Sorry, Luke, to put you on the spot, but, Ms. Allison.
Thank you for that question. We expect those revisions to be made within the week.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
No report.
Councilmember Haddaqades?
Office hours this Friday at Repress Roasters from 9 till 11.
Councilmember Harris?
No report at this time.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
No office hours for the fourth ward tomorrow, since we had the joint meeting on the budget last week.
And Councilmember Burns?
No report.
With that, seeing nothing further to come before us, the November 11th meeting of the Evan City Council stands adjourned.